Are we looking ready? Here we go. Ooh, that was pretty loud, wasn't it? Welcome to the work session on Monday, January 12th. It's 5:30. Just to remind the rest of you, there'll be a regular meeting immediately following the work session. So whatever time we finish, we'll go up to the dais and begin our meeting, okay? First of all, I want to wish everybody Happy New Year. I'm sure that you're all looking forward to this new year. I think it's going to be a good one. I think we have staff working on a lot of different items, and I'm kind of excited. And when we saw the revenue, that's, that's good news, our report on the revenue, and, and we paid the bills.
That's even more important.
That's even more important. So it looks good, so I'm definitely looking forward to that. So let's begin. And Sherri, thanks for getting here. I thought for sure.
I actually made it.
Yeah. You may have to have the council work on one of your trials or something if you couldn't get them. Anyway, so let's go on to 3.1. And we'll receive an overview of the current after-school and summer recreation programs and provide direction to staff on future programming opportunities. So David, and we also have Deanna. Nice to see you. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I appreciate having the opportunity tonight.
You need to turn your mic on, please. There you go.
There we go.
Thank you.
Now we can hear.
Thanks, Councilmember Campbell. Good evening, Mayor Council. I appreciate having an opportunity to present tonight's workshop item on out-of-school programs. We will be planning for summer 2015 programs shortly, and it is a good opportunity to have a conversation and make sure that the programming, that direction we're going, is aligned with, you know, some of the council feedback we hope to solicit tonight. So one thing I do want to frame for the conversation this evening is it's not part of the budget process. We're not asking funds as part of this presentation, nor trying to get ahead of the budget process, but rather kind of respond to an item we had submitted last fiscal year during the budget process in which we submitted a budget supplemental regarding an after-school program that garnered some, some feedback, and we definitely wanted to come back before you and kind of show you where our program opportunities lie and share with you an opportunity to provide feedback. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Basically, the out-of-school programming that we're speaking of tonight encompasses a number of different programs. So you have your traditional before-school, after-school programs, you have summer programming, and then you have holiday break programs. So when we talk out-of-school program, we're basically putting all three of those together. Definitely ask questions along the way, but we're going to kind of share with you tonight where we have current programs and where we see some of the opportunity for growth. This next slide shows you that based on the feedback we received for the summer 2014 programming, we feel we're doing a great job serving that interest in the community. I think if there's one of these bullets that really stands out, it's the bottom one where 96% of those that were polled would recommend the program to others in the community. So not only are they passionate about the programming, they're sharing it with their friends, families, neighbors, and so forth. So we take great pride in delivering quality programming, quality services, and that's the expectation that we proceed to go with.
Well, I just, I just made one, I'm going to make one comment, that we're so used to seeing 90 percentile, so there must be something we're missing in the program somewhere in some area is, and maybe later on, as you go on, there'll be something in there. I'm just curious. I know that doesn't have to be what we have to have all the time, but when you see the other 96 and then in the 80s on the other, it says to me, are we missing something in a neighborhood or at a school or whatever?
Mayor, our overall program evaluation is at a 95%, but this was specific to the value.
Okay.
We go ahead and we target different things. Was the field trip, for example, of value to you? Was it appropriately priced? And then in the end, on our evaluations, we package that up. What was your overall above-average, average, excellent, and so forth? So that's the number that we forward as part of our city stat, statistic gathering. But some of these were the other ones as far as the value of the program and the overall program itself, so.
I'm glad I asked the question. Thank you.
With this next slide, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to my recreation coordinator, Deanna Ortiz, and she'll go over the information on there.
How did I get Deanna? The Mayor Council?
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity. I would like to share, back in 2013, we had two recreation programs, one at the Odyssey Preparatory Academy, where we offered a traditional program that was Monday through Thursday from 8:30 to 3:00 p.m. We had 108 participants that joined us that summer. And then we also had a program in Mobile, where we sent staff down there Tuesdays and Thursdays and offered a 10-hour program, and we had three participants. So as a survey result from that summer, it indicated that there was a need for additional hours for working parents. So in summer 2014, we offered a program which we refer to as an extended site that is offered Monday through Friday for 10 hours a day from 7:30 to 5:30, which is a program for working parents. And then we also offered a traditional program at Desert Thunder Elementary School, where we offered Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 3:00. So this gave an opportunity for whether it was a person in need of care while they're working, or just a recreation program for a stay-at-home parent to get the kids active and out doing activities, playing with friends, and so forth.
Sherilyn?
Thank you. Could you, the extended sites, which were the two extended sites?
Mayor Lord and Councilmember Homan, the extended site was actually at the Copper Trails Elementary School, which is in the Avondale School District, and the traditional program was at Desert Thunder Elementary School in the Avondale School District.
But doesn't it say there's two extended sites?
For 2014, we offered-
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, summer of 2014, we offered an extended site at Copper Trails Elementary and a traditional program at Desert Thunder Elementary.
But this coming summer, you're looking at tomorrow? Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're, I'm sorry, that was 2015. I kept looking and saw 14. I apologize to you.
That's no problem. What we're wanting to do, just due to the demand of the extended site in summer 2014, we're proposing this summer to offer two extended-site locations and one traditional recreation site. We feel that there is a demand in the community where we would be able to host two sites and have them filled to capacity. Now we-
Joey Pizzillo has a question. Go ahead, Joe.
Could you give me a little, little broader scope of what the program entails, what their average age group is, and what type of activities is, I guess, for the participants, you know, at the program and funding source for the program?
Mayor and Vice Mayor Pizzillo, our summer recreation program is typically for kindergarten through eighth graders. We do a variety of activities, whether it be at an extended location or a traditional recreation, where we do enrichment activities, we do sports, we do group games, we do arts and crafts, we bring in guest speakers, we do field trips. So we do a multitude of activities.
Okay, all, all, I guess, when I get, it's something that is more exercise as well as arts and crafts, that type of stuff, and it's what, kindergarten, eighth grade?
Mayor Lord, Mayor and Vice Mayor Pizzillo, yes, we do a variety of activities. We do have multiple activities going on at one time. So if you have an active child, they can literally participate in an active game throughout the entire day. We have options, so we do have a balance. You know, there are children who will do an activity in arts and crafts, and then they'll also play a group game of soccer and dodgeball and just a variety of things.
So is this typically something that a parent would drop their children off because they need somebody to watch them while they're working? Is that typically what this program is?
Mayor and Vice Mayor Pizzillo, yes. Typically, the extended site is for a working parent, because it is, we offer up to 10 hours of care for that day. Now, your typical traditional site is six and a half hours of care. So it could be, you know, maybe the mom drops them off and a neighbor picks them up, or maybe they just want there to socialize for an hour or two to get some active games that they can participate in that they couldn't otherwise do at home, or they just can ride their bike there, depending on the site location.
Is that a fee that parents pay for, or is that 100% subsidized by the city, or is it a 50/50? What, how does that funding kind of work for that program?
Mayor and Vice Mayor Pizzillo, we do charge a registration fee. Our fee structure is currently under a 30% cost recovery of the program, so we do charge the parents. For instance, summer 2014, the extended site was a one-time fee of $255 per child, and the traditional recreation site was a fee of $190 for one time.
Do we have scholarships?
Absolutely, Mayor. We do have scholarships available.
And, and that covers what period of time?
Mayor and Vice Mayor Pizzillo, the extended site at Copper Trails was offered for seven weeks, and the Desert Thunder program was offered for six weeks. And that's due to the flexibility of the district allowing us to be on their campus. They have to do cleanings and things of that sort. So we ask for every school from the time school is out until the time school resumes, although they usually have one week to two weeks of cleaning that has to happen on the campus.
Okay, so we have an agreement with the schools, I assume, cover that they, do they share some of that cost, or we've got to pay the school for use of those facilities?
Actually, we do, we were able to expand, basically, because the leverage IGA with the Avondale School District. So this was the first summer where we actually did not pay a facility fee for either of those two schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Sherri?
What is the average age of the kids you have?
Mayor and Councilmember Loretano, the average age is typically eight years old, eight to 10.
And I just, I gotta say, I love the programs. You know, working mom, it's great to have those alternatives in the West Valley, because it's really hard, so it's great that our city stepped up, and it's a wonderful program. I always wondered if it's something we'd be looking in later to get kind of like the junior high and then juniors, because I know like Estrella Community College has like robotics and stuff for some, to keep the, I don't want to say the younger kids, but some of the older kids occupied for several hours at a clip. Are we looking to kind of expand it to some older kids, too?
Mayor and Councilmember Loretano, we are always looking for kind of the trends and kind of the happening, things that excite kids. The STEM programs and the now STEAM programs are kind of exciting with the schools. So definitely, when we bring in our guest speakers, we're already starting to plan this summer. So that's something that we do contact the high schools, trying to get almost like an internship program, if you will, as well as trying to integrate some of those things in the programs.
Well, and I was also, what I was, I guess, was asking, like, maybe not just to, to work and help out, but maybe kind of like as a program, because a lot of like high, junior high kids and early high school, that's kind of where they get in trouble when mom and dad are gone for like four hours. If, if we're looking to expand the program into some of the older kids, maybe separate from the little kids, where you're, maybe you're 12, 13, 14-year-olds, maybe some sort of program that deals more with like what you were saying.
Mayor and Councilmember Loretano-
I know that's, we have to always say that, and let's just, so you don't have to do that. This is a real conversation, so don't worry about that. Just answer the question, okay? Because that sort of stops the flow, and it's hard for you and your thinking, and we're asking a lot of questions, so let's just do it like we're having a conversation here, okay?
Sure, and that's something we could definitely explore, is having a teen dedicated program. It's something that we have done in other cities, and it has been successful.
Yeah, I think that would be a great, when we get to that point addition as well.
Absolutely.
Joanne?
Well, and Sherri brought up a good point, having four kids of my own and going through those, those older years. I know the things that, that drew attention by the kids, that they were wanting to be part of it, was kind of in the sense where you had camp weeks, and it would be that, you know, this week was dedicated to rocket building or something, and you got the older kids that were, you know, they might be interested in two hours a day or something that got them out of the house doing something like that, or it was, you know, there was a theme to a couple of weeks that got some of those kids to do some of those things. And I apologize, my computer just shut down on me, I ran out of juice, and so I would have looked, I've already been through your slides, but I would have looked through again. I know in the past, and Sherri might have some idea, or Nathan, but the YMCA used to cover a lot more of these sites, and I'm, I guess that they are no longer, because I, I thought they had like 15 sites over the years, but they must be cutting back. Is that why the, this need is, is coming more prevalent to us? Is that what's going on?
Well, as we'll see in an additional, the next slide-
Okay.
-which we can flip to if you'd like.
You know, you feel free to say that, that I've got it covered under the next slide-
Okay. And that's why I'm sorry.
We will kind of go over the inventory of programs that are currently offered, but to answer your question, I think what has happened, at least in the after-school world, is the Avondale School District used to use the YMCA on their campuses and/or bus the kids from boundering schools to an additional school. And the Avondale School District, I believe two years ago, decided to do after-school programs on their own. So they created a department called the Aces Department, and they now do their after-school programs in its house. Therefore, thus the reason why the Y no longer does those, because there'd be a duplication of services on a campus.
We have a few more questions.
Thank you.
Bill?
And Councilmember Campbell.
I'll call you, and then we'll go over here. Sorry.
Kind of getting back to Councilmember or Vice Mayor Pizzillo's question about the funding for this. The 2014 funding was a supplemental, one-time monies for this year, if I remember that correctly, for the after-school programs that were tested last in the summer of 14. Is that correct?
We had submitted a budget supplemental for a pilot after-school program. We had been approached by a charter school to explore opportunities for an after-school program. They have subsequently filled that need on their own. So right now, those funds have not been utilized. Those will be returned and available after this budget year. The financial commitment to the program, as you can see, we've had considerable growth, and I think what we've done is we've been able to leverage existing resources through utilizing our IGAs and not having to pay for rental fees, if you will. So we've been able to reallocate those to staff time and broaden our scope. Basically, what we're, what we're getting to is the 2015 summer recreation plan is about at our threshold with our current resource utilization. So tonight, we were hoping to garner some feedback on if this continues and the demand is still there, we would need some direction and ultimately need to come back for additional resources through the formal budget process that's upcoming, so.
Okay, so the funds that were, that were allocated for the summer recreation program of 2014 were unused, but they were one-time, one-time-
The one-time supplemental, yeah.
They were one-time supplemental. Okay. And then, obviously, if we decide to move forward, you're looking for supplemental to pilot for next year, or are we looking, are we talking about ongoing?
The 2014, or 2015 summer recreation plan is funded. We are able to do that with existing resources. So this is our plan going forward. As we go into the future, if we get additional interest in expanding the program, at that time, we would have to come before you with some supplemental requests.
So we're really talking about a year from now?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Wally?
My question is, the $255 per child, is that for all the weeks or just per month?
It is a one-time fee for all of the weeks. So for instance, the Copper Trails program was a seven-week program. That was a one-time fee.
But we don't charge enough, because if you send your children to Boys Club and Girls Club summer program, you were paying per week, per child, for that care from 7:30 to 6 o'clock. And this is, this is a steal at $255 per child. If you're going to have your child in daycare for 10 hours a day for seven weeks, that's just, that's, that's amazing. I mean, you should be full with thousands on the waiting list, literally. But I would like to recommend to you to, to consider approaching the Community College, ASU, and other universities to see if their recreation majors might want to intern for us. And I know in the Park and Rec Department, we do have a lot of young folks who are interested in the recreation field, and we may be able to use those students to supplement our own staff. I don't know if we'd have to pay them a stipend, or if they would have to do it as a free internship, but it's something to look into.
Absolutely. We actually had an intern last year from ASU.
Oh, wonderful.
And so we are always looking, Dave and I have actually met with a couple potential interns for the summer as well as the fall, so we're always looking for interns.
Wonderful. So how do you let our residents know that this after-school program is available? And I guess it's first come, first served, huh?
It is first come, first served. It does go out and are in focus. Now, because of the current IGA we do have with the Avondale School District, they also help us, because they're, they're our partner. They are held on their campuses currently, and so they do promotion as well as we do put some things on the Litchfield Elementary School District. They have a website that we're able to share that information. We do lots of flyers. We have flyers at all of our events in the spring that we'll promote for the summer program.
So do we only enroll Goodyear children, or are we enrolling children from Avondale as well?
We are enrolling children from everywhere, although it is a higher price for non-Goodyear residents.
Still, still a steal. My goodness. I didn't realize it was so cheap. Spoken from a mother who had children in daycare for, I mean, forever. The teen program with the, with the Boys Club and Girls Club, they separate, when you're a teen, you're 11, and you get to go into the big room where the Xbox is and the computers. And the little kids are not allowed through the threshold, because I have grandchildren that I take to and from. But they do have, you know, rocket science stuff, and they do, do computers and things like that. I don't know if we would be able to do that to separate our kids, but usually after 12 or 13, they're no longer, they don't go to daycare.
Very true.
Because they're too, they're too big to be with the little kids.
We do separate our kids based on just age range within the program, but we don't actually have a dedicated, we don't currently have a dedicated teen program like you're referencing.
Well, you may not have enough teens to do that. You may need to use the teens as helpers or something, I don't know, to keep them interested.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, can't you go on? All right, go ahead.
Okay, back to 2015. So basically, we've already kind of explained that we are looking to add an additional extended site, and thus the demand of, like Wally said, Councilmember Campbell, the, you know, very reasonable price to residents, so. Moving right along, on this slide, you'll actually see our inventory of the Goodyear schools. So this is where we look to see any gaps. Currently, I know we kind of previously talked about different providers offering those different programs. The X's will show all of the after-school and holiday break programs, as well as some summer programs that are offered by non-Goodyear services from us. Now, as you will see, the after-school market is pretty well-covered. There's lots of X's on that column. The holiday break schedules, you'll see quite a few X's as well. When it comes over to summer, the GY on the legend references the schools that we have currently put in as part of our 2015 summer plan, which would be the two schools that we hosted programs at last year, with the addition of Centerra Mirage, that would be our third additional extended site. Now, I will let you know that the Litchfield Elementary School District is also planning on having a summer program for their schools. It's just not, at this time, they didn't have a specific location to give us as to where that will be held, but there will be an additional option, as well as you'll see a couple of the charter schools that will be offering summer programs as well.
Sherri? Just to point out, when West Star isn't marked, they go to Estrella, them and Rainbow Valley, they all go to the Estrella, the LEAP program.
The LEAP program, yes.
LEAP program, yeah, because that's where my kids were when they were littler, and it's, it's a great program. But looking at the, the summer, it is kind of thin, especially here in the West Valley. So I, I'm glad you're looking to add additional sites, because I know there's a ton of need for that.
Absolutely.
We have a number of the churches also that have summer programs.
We did call a few of the churches-
I know Skyway does.
... and they do have some vacation Bible schools. Now, they're not typically all day or a six-and-a-half-hour day. Most of them-
Usually only last a week or two, too, right?
And that's what they mentioned, was typically it's like one or two weeks, and it's anywhere from three to four hours a day.
Although we could do something with the, MOU with their, with their churches in the, in the facilities to, to have programs.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I'll jump, I'll jump back in on this next slide. As you can see, we do have a couple of our master plan goals that speak to out-of-school programming and working with school districts to maximize the programming, as well as looking at other school settings, charter schools, to provide those essential, basic recreation programs and services. It's, it's essential that working parents have a safe, affordable, reliable school, out-of-school care program, gives the working parent a peace of mind, they can go on to their occupation, extended hours, they can go to work, not have to worry about leaving early, they know the kids are looked after and are, are in a, in a safe environment, you know, working on a number of things. So we've kind of, as you looked at the previous slides, are really focused on that summer gap, that service area. I think that's where a lot of our opportunity is, and that's where we look to, you know, gather some feedback tonight, based on that.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Sherri.
When it said the holiday schedule, did that include the spring and fall breaks? Are we going to cover that or look to cover that in the future? Because that's also a big gap that you find, there's a lot of problems. Because if you try to leave your city area where your schools are, not everybody's on the same school, so you can't put your children like Peoria or Glendale for those, because they're in maybe a different break.
Currently, it seems that most of the school districts are actually providing their own break programs during those times. Now, whether it be at, you know, one particular, it might not be at your home school, but it might be at a school that's a mile away. So they're kind of already offering that.
I didn't know that. I know ours did, but I didn't know if anybody else was.
Yes.
And continuing on, you know, a lot of the drivers in, in where we look to serve the community service gaps, where are those opportunities located? We do realize that by utilizing the IGA we have with Avondale, we are a little bit clustered, so we're going to look to hopefully broaden and, and get different sites out in the community to, to make sure that different sections of the city are being serviced. But right now, with the momentum we have with the Avondale Elementary School District, that's kind of where we're, we're gaining a foothold and having some great success. So as we continue to go down and look at other partners and their willingness to cooperate with us in, in providing the service delivery, we'll, we'll definitely strategically locate those sites as best we can, so. That kind of gets us to the, the closing slide here. Again, appreciate having an opportunity to provide some, some information today, tonight, and we definitely look for any additional comments, feedback that you may have.
Any other question? Joanne?
A couple of things. So first of all, I saw that you had partnerships and, you know, collaborations, looking for, for other entities that you can make this a successful project, especially with some of the services. And I, I just wanted to make sure that you are also looking at benefiting these sites with some of those feeding programs that are actually out there. You know, especially in central Goodyear, where many of those schools are, you know, free and reduced lunch, Title I I schools, that they have these feeding sites, they're just searching for the places, and obviously, this makes the most sense for some of these residents, that would be helpful for that. And it could even be breakfast and lunch, you know, especially if you're having some of these sites with the, the 10-hour programs. The other, other question that I had was, and I know you didn't really go into it, but obviously, one of the huge successes that Goodyear continues to have is our swimming program. And I'm, I'm wondering when we hit capacity for that program and the capacity to which that pool can continue taking. I, I just, I do get concerned about that, because to me, that's been a very successful program. The kids enjoy it so much, and, and it's back to, you know, years ago, before, I don't think either one of you were here, but there was a, a master plan done of, of the parks and the needs within Goodyear, and they were showing that- showing that the youngest ages of our city was all central Goodyear, and there, we had the most kids, and we had the least amount of activity and functions. So even though I know we want to hit Litchfield Elementary School, we want to hit Astrea or Liberty Elementary School District, you know, we want to spread ourselves, it just, focusing on where's the biggest need and where's the most amount of kids. At the beginning, I understand that partnership, and I'm glad that you're, you're looking at the other places. But back to that pool, I think that's something that we really need to continue to, to look at and find where do we, when do we hit, you know, a stopping point with, with what it can take. And when it finally is, you know, you know I push Loma Linda, but, but that pool is a big deal, especially when we're talking about what goes through the summer. And my last comment was, in the last eight years that I've been on this council, and we've had all those surveys go out, and I, and I don't remember the point of the very last survey that we had, but after-school program, programming has, has gone from, from number two to number one between adult services and after-school programming. And so I just always want us to, to realize, and you guys just said it, the demand is there, the need is there. What, what do we do? How do we continue on? And to Wally's point, how can it continue at a 30% subs, or, you know, 70% subsidy to a 30% cost? So I think those are the things that we need to really look at.
Cheryl Lynn?
I do have a question, and that is, when you're, when you're, the surveys, who's answering the surveys? Is it the parents or is it the children?
It's the parents, yes.
It makes a huge difference.
Yes, absolutely.
No, it's not. It's a valid question.
It is the parents.
You know, I, I agree with, with, you know, Joanne's comments about where the programs have always ended up in the survey. Always been very high. As we get, as we move into this year, and I did not get an opportunity to hear or see what the governor's state of the, state of the state was today, but if it's anything what we've been listening to the last few days, the tendency now for the state to shift some of its obligations to the city, or to cities in general, I think is, is going to have a much bigger impact on whether we're able to offer these types of services in addition to maintaining our roads and doing some of the other. So I just, from my perspective, would just like to issue some caution as we go forward from a financial perspective, whether we're going to be able to expand the programs beyond what we have. The residents may want them, but the residents aren't interested in necessarily paying for them either. So I think we've got to be very, very careful as, certainly as a council, and, and I would urge the staff to be, to be overly cautious as, as we start to build our, our grant. This would be great, because, you know, if, if we were to win the lottery, then I think we, you know, this is, this is where I want my money to go. But short of that, I think we just have to be, we just have to be careful.
I have to agree with you. And I think that's the danger of these presentations like this, because we see the opportunity young people have, and we have a tendency, all of us, to want more and, and offer it to everybody. And so I, I think that's, we have to really, and anything that gets presented to us, I think we have to be cautious. And Bill, I appreciate you bringing that forth, because it is a big question mark of revenue and revenue that may be used, that is our revenue, shared revenue for the state. We just don't know that yet. So, Sherry?
And I, I think this also piggybacks on Wally's point, when we look for the, the market value of what these, these costs, you know, maybe keep it obviously under-market for our residents, maybe not at 30%, but maybe look to see what a fair market is. But then maybe the non-residents pay the full amount. I mean, that seems like we shouldn't be subsidizing the non-residents, perhaps. And I also think it's important to note, I think the field trips are an extra cost as well. So each field trip is a cost, whereas some of them, you know, when you do the market analysis, some of them, these programs may cost more a week, but your field trip's already built into, to that. So I, I think there's all these different things. But I, I think we need to look at, at the fees before we, we start this up to make sure that, you know, we're still giving the best bang for the buck for our residents and not subsidizing the non-residents as much, because it's our taxpayers who are doing it.
Right, right. Somebody else want to speak? Has everybody got?
Just one. Joanne?
And just one last question. I, I agree. I really think that this is something that a demand and a need is one thing, and how it is paid for is the other. And, and I, I'm sure that you're looking, but there's just so many grant opportunities out there with after-school programming that, and I've, I've, I know we've heard them and seen them and LLC. There's, there's many national groups out there that, that, you know, may be real excited to see that we're trying to develop something, and they're, they're willing to give us some grants on. I don't, I don't know, but I just hear about them a lot, so.
We'll definitely keep an eye out for those.
Anything else? Oh, just, all right, Wally?
Well, I would like to thank you and all of your staff that does this after-school program, because you recognize the need and you've started something that's been very successful. And we do know that our residents want it, and we just want to thank you for that. And we know that you're going to provide the highest quality care and programs for our children, and we just thank you for that. It's, it's a real plus for us, and I'm really excited, and I'm so happy to know that it is so successful, because it is so needed. It's heartbreaking for me to talk to mothers and dads who tell me that one of their salaries goes for childcare. So basically, they're living on one salary rather than two, because childcare is so terribly expensive. And I just thank you for being so innovative to find a way to help our residents by, by being so frugal in providing such a great care.
And I think the entire council echoes the same sentiment. Wally, thank you for mentioning that. I think we all feel that way about our, our families. Brian, you had something?
I, I do. Listening to this, I, one thing I think that would be helpful for the mayor and council is, the council actually adopted fee schedules. It's been now some years ago, and it, it established some of the subsidies, you know, and the thought was that we would provide more support for youth programs, adults more at 100%, but I think that'd be helpful for us to provide that schedule to council, so you can see what was adopted some time ago, just so you have that, an additional consideration. So we'll get that to the mayor and council.
Yeah, and it's nice to see, too, if they can see how the growth has been in, in individual opportunities, instead of just in a broad picture like this. I think it would help, too. And then also, you know, things change, as you well know. I mean, your department gets that more, and what is the latest thing that young people want to be a part of and the activity, so it's constantly changing. So anything else for, okay, thank, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we're not going to go on any informational items or anything like that. Oh, I apologize, because they had the wrong first name for you. I'm sorry. I already have a problem remembers people's name. Then when they put the wrong name on here, it even adds to it. So my apology to you. Okay, so we're going to adjourn this meeting, and then we're going to, we'll need your help to get back up the dais, and then we'll begin the next meeting. Meeting adjourned.